On behalf of the BNA and the League of Women Voters of Brookline, one of our co-sponsors, and the Town Meeting Members Association, I just want to welcome everyone to the Warren Article Forum tonight. As I sat down today to think about what to say, the thoughts of Donald Trump and Hillary Clinton just kept coming into my mind. We're all in something of the fog from the other night. It was a grueling presidential campaign. And it ended with a result that a lot of people in this room probably weren't so happy with. With presidential politics, there's only so much that we can do here. But with Brookline issues, we have 100% control in it, 100%. And tonight, we're going to discuss these issues. We're going to discuss real issues that affect us all. They affect our neighborhoods, they affect our daily lives. So, not to minimize the national stuff, the importance of the local government really can't be overstated. So as we recover from this presidential campaign, we'll turn our attention back to Brookline. The issues tonight are important, and the outcome is squarely within our control. So we have five presentations of Warren Articles tonight. That's more than usual. We have 35 of the Warren, as you probably know. We're going to be covering nine of them in five different presentations. The articles in order of the presentation tonight are Article 19, which adds a transit parking overlay district to the zoning bylaw. That'll have to pass by a two-thirds majority. We have Article 25, that relates to the pay-as-you-throw waste removal system, potentially coming soon to our neighborhoods. We have Article 22, which addresses the potential issues of unfinished basements or attics, currently not being counted in the gross floor area of the home. That's also a zoning article, and it was passed by a two-thirds majority. We have Article 34, which is a resolution in support of affordable senior housing. It's proposed to use air rights over a town-owned parking lot in Brookline Village. Then last, we're going to have the set of articles, Articles 7 through 11. These are all related to the Emerald Island Special Overlay District. That's located near the start of Mission Hill, Gateway East. And all five of these articles will be covered at the same time tonight. And those also being zoning articles should have to pass by a two-thirds majority. Before I hand it over to the moderator, I just, a bit about the format. So first, as always, goes without saying, we're not going to have any personal attacks or anything like that. And that includes some questions from the audience. We'll stick to the facts and opinions about them, and we're not going to call anybody into question. That warning aside, we're going to learn about these issues, and we'll have a spirited discussion, I'm sure. So the ground rules for the evening. We have six minutes for opening statements. The proponent is going to go first. We'll have about 10 minutes of questions and answers. If you have a question, you'll raise your hand. The moderator will recognize you. You'll introduce yourself, where you live. And questions must be questions. We're not going to have speeches from people asking questions. We'll wrap up each article with closing remarks. That's going to be two minutes for each one. The article opponent will go first, and then it will be closed up with the proponent of the article. The moderator and the timekeeper are going to be very strict with these limits. We've got a lot to cover tonight, and we don't have a lot of time. I don't want to keep you here too late. So finally, I'd just like to thank you for attending, listening, participating. We always appreciate it, and it should be a great night. I'm now going to hand it over to our moderator, Amelia Koch of the League of Women Voters of Brookline.
And I will in turn introduce the timekeeper, who's Lee Koch's child, who many of you may know. And she's sitting in the front row. And please, speakers, keep an eye on her. As you go through your speech, she will tell you how long you've got left on a regular basis so that you can wipe off a point. All right, so first we have Article 19, which if you recall, there will be six minutes for opening statements for this article. And we are expecting a proponent, Scott Englander, and opponent, Lisa Allen. Please come forward and take your seats behind your labels. Six minutes for each, for opening statements. I'll just step out of my role for one second and just say how grateful I am to be here in a civil democracy. I know, but actually, it was a great start.
So, well, this is how we are in Brookline. Can you hear me now? Great, okay. So it's a great relief to be working on a local issue that affects us all and actually be able to do something about it. So, right now in Brookline, for residential construction, new construction and conversions, between 2 and 2.3 parking spaces per housing unit are required by the zoning bylaw. No matter where they are in Brookline, no matter how small the unit, or how high the cost of including that parking, how small the benefit, or how negative the impacts. And we'll talk about some of those. So Warren Article 19 seeks to lower that requirement, not eliminate it, but lower it, in areas of Brookline that are near the MBTA line, near Brookline stations. The goal is to set residential parking requirements that reflect, support, and protect Brookline's patterns of land use, travel behavior, and vehicle immersion. And the need to correct our current parking requirements became apparent after a lot of analysis by a lot of people who've been studying this issue intensely over 10 years, that revealed that the townwide requirements are poorly suited to specific contexts. And our current residential parking requirements are too high, requiring more parking than residents need. And doing this has some serious negative consequences. So the Article 19, as submitted, has been endorsed by Brookline PACs, by the Planning Board, by the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee, and the Green Caucus. And why am I so passionate about what would seem like a rather obscure provision of the zoning bylaw? It's because of the negative consequences. They have serious ones. They impact social equity, environmental and livability concerns, and result in poorly designed or out-of-scale buildings that are incompatible with these existing neighborhoods. These problems are not unique to Brookline. They raise the cost of development. They create effectively a hidden tax that skews residential development towards larger and less affordable multi-bedroom and luxury units. They've effectively prohibited the development of smaller studio and one-bedroom units in Brookline, units that are more suitable to singles and couples and families without children. So these requirements needlessly increase rents, and they prevent homebuyers from making rational home purchase decisions. And in doing so, they disproportionately affect the lower-income community members. What if a prospective homeowner, instead of spending $120,000 on two underground parking spaces, could use it to purchase a home of greater value? Or have a mortgage that's $120,000 smaller? That would make a big difference. So if you can flip through some of the next slides, you can see that these requirements create some spatial dilemmas that have typically been resolved by granting relief to homeowners and developers to approach unopened space, and decrease setbacks, and increase building height when putting parking on the first floor. You can see here some comparisons for individual streets of what some of this new construction looks like, and the sort of architectural backflips they have to do to incorporate the parking. The result, maybe one more dilemma, so I can look at my hand. You can leave it there for a second. The result is poorly designed and out-of-scale buildings, less open space, more paved surface, and a degraded neighborhood streetscape. That results in increased traffic and congestion, and noise, and pollution, and greenhouse gas emissions that go with it, as well as increased competition for curbside parking. Now, if Brookline had been built with today's residential parking requirements, and commercial ones for that matter, it would look and feel nothing like the town that we know and love, and would have few of its charms. Now, there are additional negative impacts of this. The increased paved area exacerbates urban heat island effects and polluted stormwater runoff. And including parking instead of units in a given building for the same square footage will reduce the town's property tax revenues for decades to come for a given project. Once you have excess parking in the place where you live, it really skews your travel choices and toward private vehicles and away from public transit, or cycling, or walking, or any of the numerous options that are available today. Residents cannot or will not opt out of subsidized parking regardless of how they prefer to travel. And frankly, why consider arranging your household with one less vehicle if two spaces are bundled with your apartment rent? Why pay a transit fare if you can park for free? So, the current requirements, like those in other communities, have no scientific basis. Originally, parking requirements were put in place in Brookline because it was thought that they would lessen congestion on the streets. Ironically, they've had rather the opposite effect. And parking requirements have been likened to a fertility drug for cars. If Brookline wants to discourage appropriate housing development and increase traffic congestion, taxing housing to subsidize parking is the perfect way to do it. So let's look at some actual patterns of car ownership in Brookline. So this is the area that we're going to be talking about. The upper right area of this is everything within a half mile of a T-stop. If you can go to the next slide, please. And it's not so much the fact that it's near a T-stop and we expect people to use the T instead of cars, but it's that this is a very good proxy for part Brookline that's much more dense and more walkable, and where people do in fact use their travel behavior is quite different. Go to the next slide, please. Here is a walk score map. When you're looking for a place to live, often walk scores are advertised with the properties you're looking at. And this is a website you can go to online to see how walkable it is, from a score of 0 to 100. The area we're talking about here, it's hard to see with the colors on this projector, but it lines up pretty well with the proposed district. Next slide, please. So you can see here that there are a lot of sources of data. In 2012, the Moderators Committee on Parking, which was chaired by Lee...
Excuse me, Scott?
Sure.
I think Lee's signaling that your six minutes is up.
Oh, okay. So let me just wrap it up.
Actually, unfortunately, no. We really are going to be strict about it.
Okay.
But you'll have lots of time to answer questions and can fit in additional information. Mr. Selman, please. You have up to six minutes.
Okay. First, describing me as an opponent of this article is not really accurate. I actually support this article as amended by the Advisory Committee and the Board of Selectmen. The principal difference between the Advisory Committee/Board of Selectmen version and Scott's version has to do with the number of parking spaces associated with each unit of various sizes. Let me give you a little bit of background. In 2010, Town Meeting considered reductions in the minimum off-street parking requirements, and the article was referred to a Moderator's Committee, which I chaired. In 2013, the committee issued a report and proposed a Warren Article to reduce parking minimums to two spaces for a two-bedroom, 1.5 for one-bedroom, and one space for a studio. We also proposed 2.3, leaving the 2.3 space requirement for three or more bedroom units intact. Scott's article proposes much more drastic reductions. Town Meeting did not pass the 2013 article. It got a majority, but it didn't get the two-thirds. And Scott's article has much more substantial reductions. And I quite frankly have serious doubts as to whether it could pass just based on the prior experience. So the idea of reducing parking spaces has merit, particularly for studio and one-bedroom units, which is the thrust of what the Parking Committee concluded. I do take issue with some of the premises behind Scott's proposal. First, he is talking about a transit parking overlay district, which is, as he's described it, is our parts, areas of Brookline that are within a half mile of the T. And actually, the description in the warrant is, "These are areas that are well-served by the Green Line." Now, you can say a lot of things about the Green Line, but I think "well-served" isn't one of them. Someone who uses the Green Line every day, there's nothing well-served about that type of mass transit. The other premise of his proposal is that he seems to be focusing on the fact that the only reason people would have a car is for commuting purposes. And there are plenty of people who use the T every day but who absolutely have a need for automobile for purposes other than commuting. And I think that premise is simply incorrect. The Moderators Committee actually conducted a statistical analysis to see whether or not proximity to the Green Line actually had an effect on car ownership. And what we controlled for, in addition to proximity to the Green Line, was the number of bedrooms in the unit size in terms of number of bedrooms, and also whether it was an owned or rented unit. And what we found was that number of bedrooms and ownership had a statistically significant relationship with car ownership. But that proximity to mass transit did not. So the core premise of Scott's proposal for a transit overlay district is simply not supported by the data. Brookline is also unique in having the tradition of no overnight off-street parking. And the reason that we have off-street parking requirements is in support of that. So, overall, I do favor some reductions. I don't think that the reductions that Scott is proposing, and are less admitted, are justified. They sort of suffer from a fallacy of averages. He's sort of focusing on average ownership without understanding that there's a lot of variation around that. So an average of 1 and 0 might be 0.5, but if you happen to have a requirement for one car in a particular building, and there's only 0.5 on average available per building, it's not going to be satisfactory. The Moderators Committee considered all of that, and we adopted what we felt was a reasonable compromise. So I support favorable action on the version of this article that was adopted by the Advisory Committee and the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now, just to remind the audience, we have 10 minutes for questions. And please keep them to questions and not speeches or statements. And please identify yourself before you speak. Questions, please. I think you can be heard. Let's give it a try. Well, no, I mean, please let me know by the side if you're having trouble understanding.
Betsy, with, and Town Meeting number increasing five. But I'm asking a question about statistics, because I remember reading in the write-up that there was a practice or something which involved rounding upwards, so that a 0.5 could be a 1.0, or a 1.5 could be a 2 in terms of calculating parking. So can somebody clarify that?
And let's give up to two minutes to each representative for responding. Lee will hear.
I have no idea.
So let's be, we're going to alternate.
You can clarify.
Lee, excuse me. I'm going to alternate the lead to respond, and we are going to start with Scott Englander.
Sure. Thank you, Betsy. I believe what you're talking about is that in a given project, once you add up the requirements for each unit, all the units, if you get a number that has a decimal portion, say 1.8, or say it's at that point 10.8, you would round up to 11 spaces. If it's 10.2, you would round out to 10. So it's basically the same way you'd round anything. So this is how fractional space requirements per unit end up affecting the total spaces required in the end. And so I will say that with regard to averages, remember, these are minimums, they're not maxims. So if the market demands more parking in a given project, developers will, they know the market pretty well, and will add spaces accordingly. And so there may be, in a larger building, there may be a diversity of needs. Some people won't need any. Some people will need more. And so, you know, on average, I think the needs are, the numbers that are proposed are based on the average need within this very specific part of Brookline. So I hope that answers your question.
And Mr. Selman, you have other questions?
I'll just add something. I mean, what Scott said is basically accurate. I think, and I'm sorry, I didn't fully understand the question. The Board of Selectmen's version assigned 1.4 spaces for one-bedroom apartments on average. And the Advisory Committee version, originally assigned 1.5, Advisory Committee adopted the 1.4. Now, let me explain the implications of that. If you have, for example, a five-unit building, under the current zoning, there would be 10 spaces required. Under the Advisory Committee version, which corresponded with the Moderator's Committee recommendation, it would have been 7.5, which would have been rounded up to 8. Under the Board of Selectmen version, it would be 7, which would be 7. So the difference is that it's probably typically a one-space difference. Relatively smaller buildings and larger buildings might have slightly more than that. I personally think 1.5 is perfectly fine, but we simply didn't want to, we didn't feel it's worth the effort to have a floor disagreement with the VOS on that one point. So we went along with it.
Very good. Additional questions? Please.
Yes, Jane, 363, in hearing.
Yes.
This seems to turn on numbers. So I'd like to understand the methodology that you choose to get the numbers, Scott, Scott, graph a player showing us the situation in 2012. I'd like to know, Mr. Selman, when you draw your numbers, were they specific to the overlay district? Were they included in the town law?
If you recall...
And so, Mr. Selman, we'll begin with you, and you have two minutes.
If you recall, the Moderator's Committee, with cooperation of Pat Ward's office, circulated a questionnaire, survey with the Town Census. And we got about a 50% response rate, which is quite remarkable. We divided the town into 16 neighborhoods. So we actually gathered the statistics for each neighborhood and for each unit size in each of those neighborhoods. So we basically had neighborhood-specific districts. This is all spelled out in the Moderator's Committee report, which you can find in the May 2013 combined report. So we looked at, our averages, I don't remember the numbers specifically. And they're not all that different than the numbers that Scott has. But what we didn't want to do is simply use those averages to specify what the requirement should be. Because again, there's a fallacy of alignment averages. It's drowning in a lake that's on average six inches deep. You need to understand more than average. You need to understand variation. And what we did was, we took that information, we looked at where we were, and we developed, the committee developed, as consensus. And there was a pretty broad range of expertise on the committee coming from development, real estate, and a number of Town Meeting members from different parts of the town. We developed a consensus that we would come up with a compromise that seemed to make sense. It wasn't all that dramatic. We cut studio requirements by, like, in half, and we cut one-bedroom by 25%. So it was driven by the data, but it wasn't, we didn't simply replicate it there.
So my question was, was your numbers drawn based on this overlay district, not on the neighborhood? Because neighborhoods cross and out of, you know what I'm saying, geographically. I want to know, specific to the overlay district, what numbers are included?
I, what I told you is, I don't recall specifically. But what we did do is perform a statistical multiplicity regression analysis in which we attempted to control for factors other than proximity. And what we concluded was that proximity to mass transit was not statistically a significant driver of car ownership. You have to remember that in the North Brookline, North Brookline areas, which is essentially what the Transit Overlay District is, you also tend to have smaller units on average and more multifamily dwellings. And that seems to be what's more controlling. And it happens coincidentally to correspond to the Transit District, but it's not Transit that's controlling it. It's unit size and unit ownership.
Thank you. We extended our time by one minute, giving the additional question for clarity. And please, Mr. Englander.
Sure. I think I have a graph that I have. If you can go forward one, or two slides, actually. Yeah, so really, there are some significant differences in travel behavior inside and outside the overlay district, as defined. And you can see that here. This is an American Community Survey done by the Federal Census Bureau. And these are numbers from, these are five-year numbers from the 2014, that is, from 2010 through 2014. And what they show is that there's, that within the Transit Overlay District, over half of the people get to work by walking or taking transit. Whereas it's much smaller, much, much smaller than that outside in South Brookline predominantly, for good reason. It's very difficult to get around there without a car. Distances are greater, and it's not a really walkable environment. So really, just as I said before, the half-mile from a transit stop is just a proxy for part of Brookline where needs and behavior are quite a bit different. The other thing here to remember is that we're not limiting the amount of parking spaces. There's no indication that there is a market failure here, that the market is failing, that would otherwise fail to provide enough parking for residents. What we're simply doing is removing a requirement that was put in place in 2000, we're decreasing it. That has been an interesting experiment, but I think the experiment's been a failure. And we can see the effects of it. So this measure is much more narrow than the 2013 measure geographically. It's limited to the area I talked about. And I think it's appropriate for that context.
Thank you very much. Right, I think we have a question over here.
Yes. Dick Bendt, a former Selectman and former Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Committee. I could actually disingenuously turn this into a question by saying, "Isn't it true that?" But I don't have a dog in this hunt, and I don't want to make it sound challenging. But I do want to make a clarification. There are some pictures shown of buildings on Maples Road in Winchester, which we call "snop-nose buildings." And in 2006, we actually changed the zoning bylaw because of those very buildings to get rid of snop-nose buildings. It now provides that not more than 40% of the width, or 24 feet, whichever is less, of the facade of a building facing a way or within 45 degrees of parallel to a way may be devoted to the entrance of a garage, carport, or covered parking area. So, just to clarify that, and we did this not as a matter of transit or parking, but really as a matter of urban design. And I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have time for, I think, two more questions. And let's take one from over here.
Yeah, I'm Frank Carroll with 3610. I'm curious, what exactly are you proposing, Scott? How does it differ from the amendment that Lee is proposing?
Sure. If you scroll all the way, not quite...
If, if you scroll all the way, not quite all the way to the end, but I have a table that, that compares them. I'm proposing, based on a study of the actual number of parking spaces used in this part of Brookline. If you can back, keep going a bit, or tap out that. Back up. We'll see a table. Go forward a few slides. Well, right there, we can, we can start with that. These are the ratios that are based on, started with, for this part of Brookline, separating single families and everything else. The, we took the average number of cars that are actually in Brookline by different bedroom, different sizes of units, based on number of bedrooms, and then added 10% to account for requirements in some districts for additional parking for guests and tradespeople. And those are the, and then rounded the numbers to the nearest tent, and those are the numbers that are proposed. If you go forward these slides, you'll see a table that compares them to the, keep going, right here. So Article 19, as proposed, the ratios are at the bottom. 1.5 or 1.9 for three-plus bedrooms, depends on the district it's in. The amendment by the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee has the ratios that are, that are aligned. One space per unit for studios, 1.4 for one bedroom, and two spaces for everything larger.
Mr. Salman, would you care to respond as well?
Well, I mean, that, that's accurate, but the, I think, the, you know, the focus here of the, of the position is on commuting patterns rather than other purposes of automobiles. And what we tried to do on the Moderators Committee is focus on ownership, and we gathered a lot of data on that. And I think, again, the key problem with, with the approach that Scott is pursuing is that he's basically taken the average numbers, which means that he is somehow positing that every single building will be exactly on average, and it just doesn't work that way. The, the, you know, the excitement, the ACS, American Community Survey, again, commuting patterns, that's not, the only reason people are on cars now, there are plenty of people who commute by T, we still have a, a need for a car. Ownership is much better indicated. The other thing I was also going to mention in terms of, of data, the data Scott relied on comes from the assessors' database in terms of cars registered in Brookline. But it turns out that cars registered in Brookline is actually understates the number of cars that are physically located in Brookline, because full-time students, graduate students, I think some, some category-simile code interns and residents are not required...
Thank you, Mr. Salman.
...to register in Massachusetts.
Mr. Salman, thank you. All right, and with apologies to the audience, because of the time, I've been asked to move us forward to the next set of questions. Thank you both very much.
I just made a comment about correction to the slide. One of them was in my street, St. Jackson Street. And there is no, my street is one block long, there is no one on St. Jackson Street by the intersection.
Thank you. With that clarity, we'll, we'll entertain a proponent and an opponent for Article 25. And we have, as a proponent, we have Harry Friedman, and then the opponent is John Dempsey. And again, we will begin with the proponent, who has six minutes to, as an opening statement. So the proponent begins, and you have six minutes.
Thank you. My name is Harry Friedman, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 12. Warrant Article 25, for those who are not familiar with it, is very simple. It says that before the town can go into a pay-as-you-throw trash pickup system, it needs the express approval of town meeting. Let me give you a little bit of background. In the early 1990s, there was a proposal before town meeting to go to a pay-as-you-throw. This did not receive favorable action, and it went into a bayance. In 2008, the Selectmen formed a committee on pay-as-you-throw, and that resulted in a warrant article before town meeting in 2009, again, saying that the town meeting should approve the town going to pay-as-you-throw. Once again, it did not receive favorable action. It was referred to a moderators committee in 2009, which was supposed to come up with a moderators committee report within approximately a year. The committee had several extensive meetings, and they came up with a report four years later, in 2013, which recommended going to pay-as-you-throw with a automatic, automated trash pickup system. So based upon history, this would then have gone back to town meeting for their approval, although this was not legally required, because the Selectmen have the legal authority to make the trash decisions. It did not go back to town meeting. And in fact, in 2014 and 15 and 16, the town basically said, we're going to pay-as-you-throw in 2017, and that was pretty much it. So what did we lose by not going to town meeting? Well, we lost a vetting process. Because if you're not at town meeting, you may not understand what happens when somebody proposes a warrant article. The warrant is drawn up, and the articles are sent to the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee has subcommittees, which specialize in different areas. So had this been going through town meeting, there would have been an Advisory Committee subcommittee that would have discussed the pay-as-you-throw proposal, and they would have studied the pay-as-you-throw proposal, and they would have had public meetings where everybody in the town of Brookline could have made an opinion and been part of the process. The subcommittee would then have made a report to the full Advisory Committee. The full Advisory Committee would then have gone through the same vetting process, where they would have asked questions, it would have been discussed, it would have been critiqued. At that point, it would have gone to town meeting, and town meeting is an open forum, where your 245 town meeting members would have then discussed this, and there would have been questions going back and forth, and there might have been amendments. And there also, before the actual town meeting, would have been emails probably going back and forth between town meeting members, raising various points and making various criticisms and questions. By not going through town meeting, none of this happened. It was a decision made from the top. And this process that we now missed, this vetting process, is a very important process because it improves the product that comes out in the end. We also lost transparency, because again, none of this ever happened. There was no public participation in this process, where just anybody could have gone to any of the meetings I described and, and had something. So what we lost, in effect, was something called democracy. In the town of Brookline, we have representative town meeting, and when we make major decisions, they go through town meeting, because that's the democratic process. And why is this important with the trash? Well, for many of us, the one constant connection to the town is the pickup of rubbish and trash. We don't call the police every week, we don't call the fire department every week. You may have kids in school, but otherwise, the constant is that every week, the town comes and picks up your trash. And if this whole system is being upended and changed, which is what the pay-as-you-throw system does, for good or for ill, it changes the way the system works, then I think it's important that this should have gone through a democratic process. And that was the reason for warrant Article 25, which would require town meeting approval before pay-as-you-throw could go into effect. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and sir, you now have six minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm John Dempsey. When I announced my plan to retire about 10 years ago, people asked me, as they do, what are you going to do in retirement? And I said to them with a straight face, I'm going to try to get appointed to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Well, I made it, and here I am now, 10, 10 years later, and very happy to be here. I disagree with Harry. We've had this conversation before in different committees and forums, I disagree with him. And I would be urging town meeting members to vote no on Article 25. Contrary to what Harry has said, pay-as-you-throw has been vetted for the past 25 years, for a quarter of a century, it's been vetted. It's already been voted on by town meeting, it's been funded by town meeting, it's even been discussed after the funding of town meeting. The decisions about how to collect, manage, and dispose of our trash correctly belong with the executive branch of our town government, as the Board of Selectmen and their professional As you know, SWAC's mission is to advise, all we do is advise the Board of Selectmen about what we think the most current and best solid waste policies are. And our mission is quite simple, I think that's why I like it so much. It's just reduce the amount of trash that we send to the solid, to the incinerator or to the landfill. It's a nice, simple task for me to focus on. The town has reduced its yearly tonnages. Not too many years, years ago, we were sending out 12,000 tons of trash, and that's only half, that's only from half of the households in Brookline. We've whittled, we've whittled, you have whittled it down to about 9,000 tons of trash a year. But we hit a plateau, about three years ago, we hit a plateau. We're kind of stuck at 9,000 tons. And we think, and we know we will be required by the Commonwealth to reduce that, to go down, to reduce that, get below that 9,000 tons. I believe we can do it. Because pay-as-you-throw is generally recognized as the single best action a community can take to reduce their solid waste. SWAC has advised the Selectmen for years to institute such a program. Harry gave you a good description, might qualify it a little bit, but a good description of what's, what's happened over those years. There was an attempt in 1992. The Selectmen wanted pay-as-you-throw, they thought, let's go to the town meeting, you know, and build, build a coalition with town meeting. It was unsuccessful, it was not voted down, it was withdrawn, because at the last minute, somebody in town meeting, who apparently had not attended all the public hearings and all the Advisory Committee hearings back in 1992, said, what about large families? They would have to pay more than a single person for the amount of trash they generated. And for some reason, town meeting started to, got, got absorbed in that and kind of lost their focus. There was another attempt in 2009 that Harry spoke about. And again, the feeling was, let's build a consensus. This is a good program, town meeting would be for the reduction of trash, you know, where it looked on as a liberal progressive community. But we got the feeling at the end that, well, there was negative feeling in the room, and the suggestion was made, let's push this off to a moderators committee. And so it never really came to a vote. The vote was, should we send this to a moderators committee, or should we just get on and do it? So the moderators committee, as Harry said, was charged to meet for a year, less than a year, well, less than a year perhaps, and come up with a plan. They dragged on for four years. But finally, after public discussion of pay-as-you-throw for a quarter of a century, with input from the Board of Select, the Advisory Committee, a working committee convened by the town administrator, public hearings, public forums, publicity in the Brookline tab, psychocorner, I know you're all readers, conversations with other municipalities, the Commissioner of Public Works described the high-grade pay-as-you-throw plan in the fiscal 2017 town budget. The plan was funded by town meeting in May 2015. It's D-Day, the ships are at sea, there's no turning back, we're going for pay-as-you-throw. Oops, Article 25. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dempsey. Now we're going to move into 10 minutes of questions, and we are going to be holding it to just 10 minutes, starting now. And I'm going to continue with the pattern of, leave you up to two minutes to respond. And we have a question over here on my right.
Could you follow if you have the time? I got a call today from somebody who attended the Lively Trustees Precinct. A little louder, please, you guys. And at the meeting, the director told the trustees that the budget was being affected because the pay-as-you-throw has been delayed so long, they were coming on the end. Irish don't have the pay-as-you-throw. Obviously, the way the person took it, the way I heard it, it's a money raiser. And we need to be honest about that. I support Harry because his explanation of democracy is what I agree with.
Thank you very much for your question, and Mr. Friedman, we'll start with you for responses, you have up to two minutes.
Well, I guess I'm assuming the question regards the raising of revenue by pay-as-you-throw. I think the, the revenue was going to come in two respects. One, there were going to be three town positions of garbage men, which were going to be eliminated in the DPW. And the second reason that we would save money by pay-as-you-throw would be because it's cheaper to dispose of recyclables than it is to dispose of trash under current contracts. I would note that, as for the savings in the DPW, that given the number of options, which will be given to people for toter sizes, so right now, every household pays $50 in the, a quarter. In the new system, depending on the size of the toter you have, and I think there will be up to four or five different-sized toters, you'll get a different-sized bill. So somebody in the DPW is going to have to keep track of who has what-size toters, who's switching toters, who's upgrading, who's downgrading, and send them the proper bill every quarter. This takes administrative time and effort, it will reduce the savings. The second thing where savings was supposed to happen was because it is cheaper under current contracts to get rid of recyclables as opposed to solid waste. However, what the moderators committee did not go into, because it was not happening at the time, was the complete collapse of recyclable market. The fact that China and other countries are no longer purchasing our recyclables. This will, if it continues, have an effect on how much it costs to get rid of recyclables vis-à-vis solid waste. So I would suggest that the savings that the town thought it was getting, it would never have gotten whether Article 25 existed or not.
Thank you. Mr. Dempsey, you have up to two minutes.
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly how, the, the financial picture for this, but Harry's absolutely right. There would be four different-sized containers, people would pay by the quarter for their container, different amounts. 18-gallon container would be quite a bit less than a 95-gallon container, as an example. The town commissioner thinks, he's the professional here, I don't know about this, thinks that the billing system would be something that could be done, it was not going to require extra staff, as far as I know, it's never been discussed. But that's all I can add. Can't really add much.
The next one. Okay, additional questions?
I have a question, which is not exactly related, related to pay-as-you-throw, but not necessarily to the decision we're raising in Article 25. And that is that I feel as though, I feel like... And that is that I feel as though, I feel a little discriminated against because my family loves pizza. And we can't recycle pizza boxes. And we can get by with a very small trash can. We didn't have to fold up and cut up these pizza boxes. And I'm just wondering if there's any other alternative out there under our current system. I gather it's because the pizza boxes are contaminated by food. And can we prevent that so that we can recycle the park for it?
Thank you. And we'll begin with Mr. Dempsey.
Yeah, this is turning into a discussion of Pay as You Throw and not a discussion about whether the executive branch of the government has the right and the authority and the responsibility to go ahead and create trash policy. I could discuss pizza boxes probably for half an hour with you. Pizza boxes are recyclable unless they are full of food waste. So what we see in my neighborhood is people take the cover off. That goes into recycling. And they put the contaminated stuff into the trash. Is that, is that your question?
Thank you, Mr. Dempsey. I believe that does respond. Mr. Freeman, if you'd care to make a comment?
Yes, well, on the technicalities, I yield to John Dempsey on all of those. He knows all of this. I would point out, however, that had this question come up during the process that Article 25 would require, it would have been discussed at a subcommittee meeting. It would have been discussed at the advisory committee meeting. It would have been discussed amongst Town Meeting members. And it would have been discussed at Town Meeting. Because none of these things happened, this question was not discussed. I would also point out that when John had said that Town Meeting has voted for this, that's partially correct. Town Meeting, over the past couple of years, has voted for trucks. We were never presented with anything that said, "Do you want to go to Pay as You Throw?" It wasn't quite that clear. Town Meeting was given probably enough information where if they had really dug, they could have connected the dots. But this is not a game. I don't feel like playing connect the dots. If you want me, as a Town Meeting member, to approve Pay as You Throw, then please come before me with a resolution that says, "We want to go to Pay as You Throw." But please do not tell me that because I approved a capital budget of the DPW three years ago that had a truck in it that was capable of automatically picking up toter carts, therefore, I should have realized and I was knowingly voting to go to Pay as You Throw. I think that's fallacious.
I need to respond to that.
Actually, we're going to move to closing statements. So you will have time. And in that for closing statements, we are going to begin first with the opponent and then with the proponent. So it is in fact your turn to speak.
Harry said that Town Meeting pretty much didn't know what they were voting for. The 245 members of Town Meeting voted yea or nay on the budget and didn't really know what they were voting for. It was very clear in all of the literature that was sent out by the Board of Selectmen, by the Commissioner, by the advisory committee, exactly what they were voting for. The trucks happened to come in after the whole discussion of Pay as You Throw. The Commissioner came up with a plan because he's the expert, not people worrying about all of the little intricacies of recycling. He's the professional. And he said quite clearly about Pay as You Throw in these reports. Brookline, it starts, Brookline has been studying Pay as You Throw system for trash collection for many years, blah, blah, blah. It was right there in black and white. That was the Commissioner's report. The advisory committee report starts with Pay as You Throw. The Board of Selectmen's report, which I assume is written by the town administrator, is the number-one policy thing in that document that every Town Meeting member got in paper and online. He said, "We're going to Pay as You Throw." And as we go that route, the best way to do that is with these trucks. Then the trucks showed up. They were listed, just like fire engines got listed. Engine five, blah, blah, blah. The two side loaders, they were all listed. Harry's right about that. But preceding that was all of this literature, paragraph by paragraph.
Thank you, Mr. Dempsey.
Pay as You Throw, that's where we're going.
Thank you, Mr. Dempsey. Mr. Freeman, two minutes for closing arguments.
There was an article in yesterday's Globe about foreign reaction to the U.S. election. And one of the places quoted was the Chinese government, which basically made fun of our process because of the choices given in the election, which many felt were not as good as they might have been. And the response by various Chinese citizens on the web was, "Hey, at least they got to choose." Because we in China, we don't elect anybody. We don't elect the mayor, we don't elect anyone. And the Americans got to choose. Democracy is messy. It really is much more efficient if somebody at the top, like the town administrator, decides on policy. That's great because it's very efficient, it's very clean, it's very easy. But it's not democratic. And you lose citizen participation. It's messy. You have to listen to critics. You may have to accommodate your critics. You may have to change the policy that you wanted to initially do. But that's what representative democracy is about. And I think that's what we have here in Brookline. And I think that's what we should have on Pay as You Throw. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. And if we could have the proponent and the opponent for Article 22, Dick Benka and Jenny Green and Srinath Sruji. So this is a discussion of floor area ratio. And we begin with the proponent, Dick Benka.
Hi. Lee, with your indulgence, I'd just like to make a comment before I start. And that is, as I was sitting in the audience, I noticed that this table was almost equally divided, half and half, between a red side and a blue side. And I don't want anything to be inferred from the fact that I'm sitting on the red side. I'm Dick Benka. I'm chair of the moderators committee on zoning FAR. And let me start with the core recommendations of the moderators committee and then touch on two other issues. This is a very technical article. By way of background, floor area ratio, or FAR, is a major way that we regulate bulk of buildings in Brookline. It's the ratio of the allowable floor area of a building to the size of the lot in which the building sits. With regard to basements and attics, however, we only include finished space. The first core provision of Article 22 would require a special permit to construct new finished or unfinished space, where that space, if finished, would exceed the otherwise allowable FAR. And it includes a requirement that such space be consistent in scale with the neighborhood. As our bylaw stands now, an unfinished basement or attic of unlimited size can be constructed without any zoning review of its bulk and without any resulting notice to a butters or Town Meeting members. Because so-called unfinished basements and attics are totally ignored in calculating FAR when building permits are issued, you can add structures that are significantly larger than what is supposedly allowed. They could be double or triple the size of houses on the street, and that wouldn't trigger any review. As a result, Town Meeting in November 2015 charged the moderators committee with finding a solution that would address this so-called McMansion loophole. We learned from the deputy building commissioner that 90% of new houses involve attics and/or basements that would cause the house to exceed the allowable FAR. A developer admitted that other developers, though not her, turned unfinished basements and attics into habitable space before the legally required tenure waiting period is up. Indeed, Town Meeting members were shown a new home where the developer had already cut the wallboard to finish off the attic and told them that he'd install it after the building department's occupancy inspection. The town has gone to the Supreme Judicial Court twice over a so-called attic that was labeled "The Master Bedroom" on a plan that the developer had to turn over in litigation. We learned of so-called attic and basement storage areas with eight-foot ceilings, fireplaces, full-length windows, and formal entries. The deputy building commissioner has described attic space with easily removable rafters at six feet of height and 10-foot-high basements with removable dummy floors four feet off the ground, creating the appearance of a room that's only six feet high. And this issue is particularly acute in Brookline because basements are defined for zoning purposes as any space where any part is below grade. So a so-called basement can essentially be a walkout first floor. We believe that the committee's core proposal for special permit review and a requirement of size consistency with the neighborhood does what Town Meeting asks us to do. It's our best effort to reduce gaming and the McMansion loophole. And we've done our best to minimize impacts on existing homes. Because the proposal doesn't change the definition of gross floor area to include unfinished basement or attic space, it doesn't prevent the construction of new homes with unfinished basements or attics or the expansion of existing homes. But it does require consistency with neighborhood scale and design. It recognizes that bulk that is finished or unfinished should be treated uniformly, since both can have the same visual impact on the neighborhood. Both should be reviewed for consistency of scale with neighboring homes. And it requires the ZBA's findings and conditions to be recorded, putting realtors and future owners on notice. The second core provision would require a special permit for exterior modifications needed to convert basements or attics when allowable FAR will be exceeded under Section 5.22 of the zoning bylaw. Section 5.22 allows FAR to be exceeded in certain circumstances. But all that is required now is facade and sign design review. The change would embed in the bylaw required notice to a butters and Town Meeting members, something that is not now guaranteed. Moreover, it would again require the explicit findings of consistency with the scale of the neighborhood. It would basically treat these exterior modifications the same as other conversions and additions under Section 5.22. Article 22 also includes some provisions that modify language. We can discuss those if you want. And it includes a couple of additional provisions that I want to mention and that I'm sure we'll discuss. It incorporates the planning department's suggestion that basement and attic exemptions in Section 5.22 be reduced from 150% to 130%. And it contains provisions that would limit the FAR exemptions in Section 5.22 to single and two-family buildings in S and SC districts. It would eliminate the exemptions in T, F, and M districts. As the moderators committee recognized in its report, we recognize that both of these latter two provisions would have some impacts on existing homeowners.
Thank you, Mr. Benka.
But there are countervailing reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benka. All right, Ms. Green and Ms. Sruji? Okay, close enough, thank you. You have six minutes for your opening statement.
Sure, I'll take three more if I have to. My name is Jenny Green. I live on Searle Avenue, Precinct 6, in the T5 district. I'm not an owner of a McMansion nor a developer. I appreciate the attention of this article, which, as I understand it, is to help to limit large new construction or renovations and to do away with the so-called McMansion loophole. But I really believe that Article 22 will have unintended consequences that would negatively impact many families who live in Brookline and are simply trying to find an affordable way to stay in the town. My family's situation, I think, reflects this unintended consequence well. For nearly nine years, my husband and I have lived in a 1,300-square-foot condo with our two children. It's one floor of a three-family triple-decker, built in 1900. We've been looking for a larger condo or a single-family home now for over two years and are having a hard time in this tight real estate market. So as a result, we've recently started to focus in on the idea of expanding in place, which would be a way to gain a little more space while enabling us to stay in a community and in a school, the school that we love. And we initially spoke with the building department about this, about finishing our attic before this article was proposed. And we're told by Michael Yanovich, the Commissioner, that this would be doable by applying for a special permit to take advantage of the FAR bonus or allowance available to us. This seemed like a great solution that would in no way impact the community. We would not be including another unit in the building and thus potentially adding children to the schools. There would be no visible change to our house in any way. We wouldn't be changing the footprint or the exterior of the building in any way. And furthermore, we'd simply be finishing an attic, something that many families in Brookline have had the opportunity to do before us. However, a couple of weeks ago, we checked back in with Michael Yanovich. And he told us that if Article 22 passes, this type of in-place expansion would be nearly impossible. We'd no longer be eligible for the FAR bonus previously available to us through a special permit. And he said that getting a variance would be nearly impossible for us. I also should note that the greater volume of applications by people like us for relief would burden the town. In fact, one member of the planning board has reported that this uptake may even necessitate an extra position on the planning board. We believe there are, no, the planning departments, excuse me. We believe there are many people in Brookline in our situation who've not yet come forward simply because they don't know this is underway and don't know how it would impact them. And frankly, it was only because of our conversations, the timing of our conversations with the building department that we even realized this would impact us. We're asking Town Meeting members to carefully consider the unintended and, I think, regressive consequences of this article as it's currently written. And we hope that you'll vote it through only if it's amended to significantly better protect Brookline families. In conclusion, we appreciate concerns about development in Brookline, and I really do. However, I also care about Brookline remaining a community where people like me and my family, who are hardworking and are very involved, but maybe don't have the deepest pockets, can continue to raise our families. And we hope that Town Meeting members share this vision.
I'll be brief because I think our time is running out. Oh, I do? Okay. My name's Srinath Sruji. And I've been living in Brookline since 2009 with my husband and my three sons who attend Pierce School. And similar to Jenny, I share concerns over Article 22 and think that it's going to negatively affect homeowners like myself. I don't think it is, I know it is. So I'm unfortunately very aware of 5.22 and FAR and all of this because a few years ago, we looked to start renovations in our house. When we purchased our house in 2009, it's a single family, excuse me, a single family that was built in the 1930s, hadn't been touched since the 1970s. We were thrilled to be in Brookline. And we knew that it would need to have renovations done. Looking down the street, we knew that there were renovations we could do that would be in keeping with the neighbors and what they had done down the street. So we didn't think there was anything. We're not looking for a McMansion. We're not looking to build a McMansion. But we are looking to update our house and keep it with current modern-day needs. When we applied to build a mudroom, which is a 19-square-foot mudroom, we had to get a special permit at that time. And again, I looked at all the FAR rules at that time. And we had debated adding a bedroom with that renovation. But we knew that as soon as we added a mudroom and got it to the kitchen, all of the coating and everything would be had to be brought up to date. We frankly couldn't afford to do a bigger project, which would follow to the 5.22, 150% exterior changes. So we said, "You know what? We'll just do the project as it is now." We went without the special permit with the idea that in the future, in a few years, when we could, we would add a bedroom. And again, we're not looking to make a McMansion. Our house will look no different than any other house on the street. It's consistent with other homeowners and things that they have done. And if this passes, we can't do that. And I think it's a disincentive for young families like ourselves in moving in here if we can't make changes to houses. As, again, to be consistent, we're not trying to build things beyond setbacks. We're, I think, we should be very cognizant of setbacks, sidelines, height restrictions. But I think families should be able to update the houses to make them more usable for modern-day needs. And I think that with this type of article, we wouldn't be able to. I've talked to neighbors who frankly weren't aware of this. And I think their only reason I'm aware is because of Jenny. If this goes through, I think there will be a lot of upset family homeowners in Brookline. And I am very aware of the overcrowding issue. This is the biggest school in Brookline. My kids are in it, there are no walls. I get it. And we need to figure out how to address that. But I don't think that this is, I think this is going to hurt families. And I don't think it should pass.
Thank you very much. Okay, time for questions. And we have, we're going to set a total of 10 minutes for questions. And actually, depending on how many hands there are, I'll limit you to one minute in terms of responses so we can get in a few more. Okay, let's do prep.
Just a short question and comment, because I know how long and hard it has been addressing this issue, and I address it from the standpoint of neighborhood conservation as a commissioner. To some extent, what I think, and I'd like to correct me if I'm wrong, is having to deal with here is in part that AG disallowed the town from addressing new construction differently than old construction.
Correct.
And, and so I think to some extent, owners of existing buildings are, are perhaps feeling that they're suffering because of the egregious, I'm going to term like characterization behavior of developers in new buildings.
Pardon me, sir. Is there a question?
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'd like, you know, Dick has any way to respond to this issue. I, I have seen the same thing with respect to the kinds of buildings you all have, three developers coming in and making huge changes to existing buildings of the kind that you're talking about. And, and is it fair to say, Dick, that because of the constraints put on you by the AG, you can't disambiguate an existing homeowner versus a developer coming in and doing something with the courts as people?
Thank you for that. And yes, please, Mr. Benka.
Under, under state law, there has to be uniformity in a zoning district among all properties, both old and new. What we've done with our core provisions is try to address the new construction, whether it's a new and entirely new building or a substantial build-out of an existing building. I spoke with Mike Yanovich, and what has really, I think, hit is one of the suggestions that we had, and the moderators committee wasn't unanimous on this, and that was the elimination of the 5.22 exemptions in T, F, and M districts. And we did that, in our spring report to town meeting, we made clear that we had, that Mike Yanovich, the deputy building commissioner, had raised a T district issue for us, and that is that even now, without 5.22, the density in T districts can be increased by two-thirds, about. With the 5.22 exemptions, the density could be increased to two or two-and-a-half times what it is right now with all of the attendant impacts on schools, population, town services, and so on. And we've already seen incompatible construction in those districts. The, we've seen neighborhood conservation districts, downzoning efforts, and so forth. We made clear that this is an option, and in fact, what I've done in the last day is provide a divided vote that should be in the supplemental report that was mailed out today that will allow town meeting to vote the T, F, and M districts separately from the other core provisions. And...
Thank you very much, Mr. Benka. We're gonna...
Okay, I'll make another point later.
Thank you very much. That's perfect. Please, you have up to two minutes.
I mean, I'm not a zoning expert by any means, and obviously, Mr. Benka's worked on this for many years. I, I know that in neither of our cases, we're talking about density increases. We're not adding units. We're not adding families. So I don't think that that concern really applies in this case, which is another reason I think is an unintended consequence of whatever the article is trying to do. I'm not, I think the article has good intention. I think many people here would agree. We're not in favor of McMansions, and we're not in favor of increasing density, but neither of our cases does either of those things. You would not know from the outside of my house that anything has changed. It's an attic that will be renovated, and we're not even thinking dormers, you know? So there's no physical change. There's no density change. So I think, I appreciate that you're looking at ways to try and modify it. I think that we just have to keep in mind that there are a lot of people like us out there who will be impacted negatively.
And I just want to say that, you know, in the district I am, I'm .35, and so, the zoning of .35. And I know that if you're down two streets, my neighbors are zoned at like one or down a couple streets. So I think that what's difficult about this, the 5.22, I'm very aware of it because we need it to, you know, to do anything because I'm in a .35. So if that goes away, everyone on my street, everyone who frankly has been doing renovations is in the process or planning, will not be able to do it. So this is undoubtedly going to hurt homeowners. I, I agree that we need to be aware of the density. I really am very aware of that acutely, as my son just wrote an essay about how the library is very loud with no, and it's distracting. I get it, and we need to address that. But that is not, I think that this is going to have unintended consequences and perhaps not address those issues as acutely as we need to be addressing them. And I don't want to discourage families from moving into Brookline paying top dollar for small properties, but they're then going to be limited in what they can do to get it up to date, and I'm really concerned about that in the way this article is.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Additional questions? Okay, please.
Naomi Switzer, town meeting member, precinct ten.
You speak up?
Yeah, Naomi Switzer, town meeting member, precinct ten. I just want to understand, if you can address the topic with someone who's been involved a long time.
Pardon me, could you stand up and even speak a little louder?
Dick, if someone who's been involved with zoning for a long time, because this is a very technical issue, and for a lot of people don't understand the different districts and what that means, what you say to those numbers, and when you're talking about doing a split vote at a town meeting, if you could explain more what that is? Because when I look at this, I want to support it because I agree with the end goal, but for myself and a lot of my neighbors who live in two-family houses where many of them have been able to rent it, and their houses were built on the exact same building, the nineteen twenties, and I've rented some, or if I lived a lot in another, it looks like to me I'm not going to be able to rent it, and I want to agree with this article, that as it stands, I agree, and I want to expand the technical things about it and what you're suggesting is going to apply for that.
I wish I could, but I'm not sure I heard it adequately. Can you come down? Oh, you can do, okay, all right. Now, normally, we'd start with you. Would you care to use your time? Okay.
He can, he can. Can we say anything at all, or?
We'll give you a minute at the end.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
The question, the question was, as a town meeting member, and I threw out the terms S, C, T, F, and M districts, what do those mean? And what are, what are the implications of this, and what would the divided vote do if it goes forward? The S districts are single-family districts in town. SC districts are districts that allow single-family homes to be converted to two-family homes within the shell of that structure. T districts are two-family districts. F districts are three-family allowable districts, and M districts are multifamily allowable districts. And generally, the districts were set up to sort of follow the patterns that were in, predominated in at the time. Each district has a different FAR. The T districts have been particularly problematical because they have extremely high floor area ratios that are allowed. You can put in, in, some of them, you can have as much square footage in a property as you can, as the size of the lot. So there's a very significant potential build-out in those, in those areas. What the initial proposal did was to say that because of that, because of the significant initial build-out and because of the problems that had arisen in T districts and that were also potential in F and M districts, that we would not give these additional bonuses to homes, to single and two-family homes in T, F, and M districts. Because of some of the comments that have come in, and because Mike Yanovich indicated that the issues seem to have arisen primarily in T districts, what I've done in, in the potential divided vote is to allow town meeting to vote separately on that question of whether the bonuses should be eliminated in those districts, but preserve the idea of the special permit and design review for other build-outs.
Thank you, Mr. Benka. Up to one minute, and then we're going to go to...
Does that answer your question?
So I'll just be brief. I mean, yeah, so I'm in an S district, and I know that, what, with the irony, when I was paying, you know, money to get a lawyer to help me with the special permit for my S district house, just to add the ninety-square-foot mudroom, there were people I knew in the T district who were definitely selling off part of their land, building new houses, and breaking up one house and tearing it down and building up several houses. So I think there are distinctions between what is our, I think unfortunately, the bottom line is, there are distinctions between what is already distinct, already existing, what people have already purchased, where they want to build in place, and there are distinctions between the districts. And unfortunately, I just don't think, as this is written, it's going to address those things. So I think current homeowners are going to be harmed. I just, I do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I just add one thing? It seems like, and maybe this is in here, and again, I'm not an expert, but it seems like there should be a way also to differentiate between the single-family home and say a T district that then becomes a two-family versus a house where you're, have maintained the same exact number of units, there's no change in density, and you're maybe just expanding, making a playroom out of the basement or the attic, something like that. It feels like that should be, that should be a distinction that's able to be in this language.
The bylaw actually already does that.
Mr. Benka?
It, it, it does not allow these build-outs to be combined with an increase in units.
So we're going to go to closing arguments, and Mr. Benka, you are second. So you go, you two go first for closing arguments.
Okay. I guess, again, I really am sympathetic to the, to the concern about development in Brookline, and, but I really do believe that there are going to be unintended consequences for a lot of families in Brookline, whether you're in a multi-family or a single-family. And I would really encourage town meeting members to think seriously about possible amendments to the article and only vote it through if, if families in Brookline can be protected against these unintended consequences. And thank you for listening.
I'm in agreement. I just want to reiterate that I really do very strongly support the intent of what I said, if I'm hearing what was said earlier, I very strongly support the intent. I think we all want to preserve the aesthetic of Brookline and also prevent over, sorry about this, prevent overcrowding, but I really do also want to really protect the homeowners who are currently here and protect the investments that we've made in our houses, in our communities. And I just think right now, if this passes as is, it will be harmful to a lot of homeowners in Brookline, and I have significant concerns about that. I'm, me being one of the homeowners.
Mr. Benka, up to six minutes.
Thank you. Actually, two.
Oh, sorry. Two.
You don't want to do that.
You're absolutely right.
So ideally, almost all of us would like to say, here are the rules for new houses, and here are the rules for, different rules for existing homes, but state law doesn't allow that. Property has to be treated uniformly, and we've tried to do that. The town has explored a number of other paths, and they've either been struck down by the attorney general, or they haven't worked. The impacts of what we're proposing were not unknown to the committee. Zoning changes can be problematic in some circumstances, but we believe that Article 22 responds to what residents in so many Brookline neighborhoods are beset by, which is large, out-of-scale construction and in-your-face houses. The T district issue has become a flashpoint in town. It's led to downzoning and proposals for neighborhood conservation districts. Each of these has necessarily been spearheaded by local neighborhood activists because, because we have not moved to a townwide solution. I'm not dismissing the impact on some property owners, but on the other hand, properties in T, F, and M districts have the potential for significant density increases. And I would add that individual, single and two-family homes in any district that become non-conforming because of this change are in fact entitled to special permit relief under state law. And that, that has to be emphasized. The moderators committee included the chair of the zoning board of appeals, the chair of the planning board, two members of the zoning bylaw committee, a member of the advisory committee, and me, former chair of the zoning bylaw committee, along with the involvement of Mike Yanovich, the deputy building commissioner. Ultimately, the decision on this will be up to town meeting, but we've done the best we could to address the problems that we were asked to address and to do that while minimizing the impact on existing homes. So thank you all for coming. Thank you for your attention.
And then we have the proponent and open man for Article 34, Ken Volstein, and Liz Green. All right, now, let's begin. At the beginning, you have up to six minutes, and we begin with the proponent. So please, are you going to split it between the two of you?
We are.
Would you like the timekeeper to keep three minutes for each?
Uh, no.
Very good. So six minutes until, thank you.
Good evening to all of you. My name's Henry Wickman. I'm here to talk about the resolution to bring, to take a first step towards providing more affordable senior housing in the town of Brookline. Before I go much too far, I'd like to summarize that this is actually not just to work with Ken and I, who we've been working with a small group of people, with Betsy DeWitt, Frank Carew, and Roger Blood. Basically, a little quick history about me. I've lived in the town for thirteen years, but I've only known it's really a town for about three. I've been actively involved in town government, and I'm actually firmly on the H Friendly Cities Committee and the Commission for the Disabled, or on disability, I should say. Basically, next slide, please. We have, we have a crisis going on. We have a tidal wave of retirees. In 2010, we had thirty-nine million people who retired. Today, we have forty-eight million. In ten years, we're going to have sixty-eight million people. In twenty years, it's going to be eighty million, and in twenty-five years, the number will almost double. These numbers are expected to even increase as life expectancy is extended through medical and scientific advances. Next slide, please. So basically, we have a perfect storm here. We don't, we have a lack of affordable housing, and we have an abundance of people who are looking for it. If you could just read those quickly, I don't want to cover them, but it's staggering the amount of how affordable housing is an issue for so many seniors. Next slide, please. So people in Brookline have known about this issue for some time. In 2013, there's a forum that discussed this. Everyone said, yes, there's a problem. No one came up with a solution. Next slide, please. And I came up with an idea. I said, what if we use the air rights over the town-owned parking lots to develop affordable senior housing in our community so that people could age in our community, age in place? Next slide, please. Everyone agreed there was a crisis? And the affordable, the idea of using the air rights could provide a good solution to this. Some examples of air rights, I'm not sure how many of you actually know what it is, but good examples of it are when you're in the mass bike, you go underneath the Crown Plaza Hotel, Newton, or the Shaws, where you have one use on the ground floor and another use separated, separate use above it. That's considered air rights development. Basically, the town of Brookline had a, has had an air rights project in the Coolidge Corner Theater. I believe they've actually proceeded with that, but town meeting has passed that. Next slide, please. So Frank Carew told me, you need to find examples of this being done successfully before you can bring it before town meeting, and I did that. This is a project in California, it's Pico Richardson Neighborhood. Basically, affordable senior housing was provided in a developed community, very similar to Brookline. Next slide, please. Just going to read this quickly. This project is hailed by supporters as a creative solution for the problem of providing affordable housing in the areas such as West, the West Side, where land is very expensive. Building in the air rights above the city of a land allows for double use of the property, cutting costs, they say. Developer plans to build a four-story housing above the, the street-level parking garage. Fourteen additional parking spaces would be provided underground to residents of the senior project. Next slide, please. So basically, this idea has really grown out of the senior center. I first presented it to the Little Unity Advocacy Committee, and it was a well-received. Next, I presented it to the Housing Advisory Board. It was well-received there, and I've been advancing the idea slowly through the town meeting process, or the town process. Next slide, please. So I don't want to digress. I'm one side ahead. I studied urban history at Boston University, and I was very interested in the evolution of the Brookline Village neighborhood and the community. And I learned a lot about Brookline Village, some of the, nope, cut to the short. Next slide, please. Next slide. Not much has changed since the town bought the two houses that were previously there and combined them and made the parking lot. Next slide, please. Basically, skip that slide. Don't have time for it. Go to the, let's go to the, cut it short. Design con- Design concept. Utilize the idealness of this location. Public parking stays at grade on Kent Street. Uh, preserving, protecting parking, public parking for Brookline Village businesses and restaurants. Pedestrian access must be provided continuus, continuously. And the use of air rights development for locating the affordable senior housing above the town-owned parking lot seems like the perfect solution. Next slide, please. The Station Street provides interesting opportunities and challenges for good seniors' housing to fit into the neighborhood and the community. Next slide, and I'm running out of time, so I'm going to cut this really short. Next slide. No, that's good enough. The long and short of it, the long and short of it is, we have a crisis building every day here. Demographics show, they already show, from like the Housing Production Plan and other documents like that, that we have a senior housing crisis. We need to address this problem. This idea of Station Street senior living in Brookline Village is an opportunity to address the need that is well documented by the HPP and other plans and studies. Station Street senior living is a good demonstration to a compelling need. More important to move forward on affordable senior housing than sit around and wait for some plan to tell us what to do. Thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Linder, up to six minutes, up to six minutes.
I have the time, five minutes, so I can move us to a nice close, or does anybody want to decide?
If you watch, uh...
Okay. A minute, one, you have one, a minute, one.
I love it. Thank you. So, um, uh, my name is Liz Linder. I'm a resident and a business owner in Brookline Village. I did not realize I could bring slides to this meeting, but if you, can you back up a couple of slides? Couple more back. There we go. So, the building that you see on the left is the building I live in. On the top floor, I bought that, um, unit particularly because of the beautiful light and space, and I was, believe it or not, taken by the granite wall, which I now learn is called the Belvedere. So, I'm here with two neighbors. Um, we found out about this very suddenly. Um, uh, last night, we had a, a meeting that we were invited to. Uh, these gentlemen, um, sort of explained to us what was going on, um, as, as abutters. I've, I've heard about this project, um, from people in the neighborhood. By the way, I'm not a very good public speaker, and I'm a little nervous, so please bear with me. Um, we, we recognize the need for increased affordable elder housing in Brookline and would love to be part, would love to be part of the solution. However, we've been given insufficient time to digest and offer essential input as residential abutters, and I would like to say we're experts on exactly what it's like to live in that neighborhood. We have a lot of insight, and right now, um, that neighborhood is undergoing a lot of change in its character. Uh, when I moved to Brookline about fourteen years ago, uh, I noticed that there were a lot of cultural and, um, uh, other institutions that started to blossom, and right now, there are a lot of empty storefronts that the construction in the neighborhood is making it very difficult for businesses to survive, and I see that the impact... I, I think I'd like to talk about unintended consequences that may be a result of this lot being picked as the sole lot. So, um, the problem with this lot is that it's surrounded by residential abutters. There is another lot nearby that is not. There is a town hall lot that is not, and as somebody who would love to support this, I would like to understand what the, um, the pluses and the minuses of this lot versus other lots would be. So, I think the wording of this article is, um, not in favor of the existing owners. Um, let's see. I can read to you from one of the neighbors that just found out about this, I'd say, a week and a half ago, and, uh, she wanted to share thoughts. Um, her husband is here with his, their daughter. Um, number one, and most important to us, the construction of a large multi-apartment development with underground parking will require digging and drilling some 10 feet away from our foundations, as well as foundations of two other adjacent buildings. These buildings are very old. Our buildings are shaking right now, and we're experiencing, uh, what may be some plumbing problems from the construction across the way, and, um, the, the fact that we will be missing parking in the village for, um, buildings that do not have parking essentially to begin with is extremely painful. Um, again, we support this res... you know, we support the idea, but we want to be part of the conversation and part of the solution, because what's going to happen is you're going to squeeze out people who are exist, you know, who are long-term residents and investors in the community. Um, as a business owner, I have just talked to a number of business owners who are very upset about this, and given, you know, if, if we had a little time, we could organize and come up with some better solutions, I'm sure. Loss of light, loss of air, there's beautiful green space, what is not... this is just a quick shot I took, but there's beautiful trees that line this lot right now, and they, they bloom in the summer, and they contribute to a sense of, you know, spring in Brookline Village and fall in Brookline Village, and there's... I think that more consideration needs to be put into what needs to happen in this lot. Um, I'm just learning about town processes. I'm just learning about, um, basically how development happens in this, in this area. But my understanding is that this particular lot is, part of the reason it was chosen is because it can't be necessarily developed for other commercial reasons, but there are other lots that would probably be better for this purpose. And if this lot is the best for this purpose, I'm sure that as neighbors, we would find a way to make it work. Um, I think what we're struggling with is the no-knowledge and, you know, very... it seems like, my understanding, I, I can read to you from some notices from other town member, uh, town meeting members, um, is that there, there are processes and structures put in place for development like this to happen. Thank you very much. Um, and since they haven't been followed, it's creating some issues for existing businesses and residences. Uh, when I moved here, I thought of this as kind of the South End of Brookline. It's, it's, uh, got a lot of cultural potential, and I would like, I'm somebody who's contributing to that, and I would like to be able to continue to do that and not get pushed out by developers. So, um, you know, I... I can talk about traffic studies. The, the development that's happening across the street right now, Children's Hospital, is going to impact the traffic on Station Street, and we have no idea how that's going to happen in reality. There have been studies that have been done, but let's, I would like to, I would like to move, if this, if this is indeed the lot, um, I would like to understand how the traffic is moving and how some study's done before we get this pushed, basically, down our throats. And again, thank you. Just something to illustrate how little-prepared, um, we have been. Uh, the meeting that was given last night, the presenters, these gentlemen were asking us if we were familiar with the basic project concepts like 40B, and frankly, I'm just learning about all of these things right now. Some of my neighbors know about them. Uh, there, you know, I can list off the, off the cuff probably nine people who would like to be here, who were out of town because they heard about this a little late, and, um, yeah. I think I'm done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done for sure, for notice. Thank you. Um, all right. So, we have up to 10 minutes for questions. I see someone very excited has a question. Uh, we're going to be strict about 10 minutes, so please keep your questions to questions, not statements, and please keep them as brief as you can. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Frank Carroll. I'm the president of Kent, and I would like to, uh, uh, the proposal, but, uh, the proposal calls for the development proposal. Can you have some of your explanation for what happened to this, this or past, what the process has done, what the opportunities are, they need to be able to communicate?
Thank you, Frank. Uh, be, uh, take this one, Henry.
Yes, and you have up to two minutes.
Thank you, everybody. Um, Ken Goldstein, uh, town meeting member, precinct 14, former member of the Board of Selectment, uh, former, uh, member of the Planning Board, um, attorney in town. And by the way, neither Henry or I have any designs on becoming developers or having any kind of financial stake in anything that happens here, so we should dispel that, that, uh, potential assumption, get from the get-go. Um, thank you, Frank. The, uh, it's important to read this warrant article specifically and understand that it is, if this passes, there will, it will only be the beginning, the very beginning of the process. Uh, there, this warrant article doesn't describe any specific, um, size of project, any specific layout, any specific setbacks, any specific screening, or height, or number of units, or affordability factors. These are all things that would be considered. All this warrant article does is ask town meeting to ask the Board of Selectment to pursue this, to look into it and pursue it and see if it's, if it's a, if it's a good site for this type of housing. We think it is a good site for this type of housing because we, Henry and I and the others involved, have looked at all the town parking lots in town, and we think that this is the obvious, the obvious place to start. Frankly, every town park, own town, town-owned parking lot should be considered for this type of use, and we have the need for the warrant. Um, but the process after this point would be very involved, very public input, um, involved. There would be, um, we envision, we don't know, there's no set course for how to, how to go about something like this, but we envision that the, uh, Selectment would appoint a committee, a study committee, or a, uh, oversight committee that would evaluate the, the project design, hopefully, a, uh, a criteria for a, a, a RFP, a Request for Proposal, if the, uh, the Select, we'll go back to the Selectment, again, with public process and the public hearing, so I would...
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
And one, just one very quick point, and it would come back to, to town meeting before any eventual disposition of this.
Thank you.
Because any long-term disposition requires a two-thirds majority of town meeting.
Okay. So, um, you can have up to two minutes if you'd like something to add something.
Let's see if I can do this in 30 seconds. Um, I, I agree with you profoundly that this is a need, and I want to support it. Um, what you're asking me to do, as somebody who's basically residential experience will be destroyed by this, and my business will be impacted as well, is to take you at your word that because you think this is the best lot, this is the best lot, and it's... I would like a due process around this, as somebody who's been investing in the village, in the culture, in the community, and, uh, this is, this is the first week that I've actually had some level of free time to even pull some neighbors together, and I would like, I would like to push this back if at all, just to the next town meeting so that we can have a meaningful conversation amongst us as a community, as you are suggesting you want to help and match. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Oh, thank you. Yesterday, we had this meeting, and...
Mr.?
Yes, sure. Uh, I'm Mr. Francis Tana, I live in one of the three buildings that was about, had it 13 years old. Uh, yesterday, we talked about things about this project for some time, and for me, it was very unclear, a consistent rationale for the selection of the site, which was mentioned by this. Also, the town process hasn't been fully followed, which is clear to understand that the selection of a spot, a specific spot, can be moved forward without understanding what are the study analyses that have been done from a consulting and, and from a firm that actually works independent, and it's not just a suggestion, that I wonder what can, what can we do to actually ensure that the community, if the community knows that this is the right one? What, what can we do as a, as a member of the community? How can, how are we going to engage the community to understand why this is the right one?
And we'll begin with Ms. Linder, and you have up to two minutes.
I think that's a great question. I would like to learn, I would like to understand that, too. I, I don't unders... I don't know town process well enough, but I am invested in learning. I've been showing up, as soon as I heard about this, I've been in touch with a gentleman who are, uh, proposing this and petitioning, you know, you get, you see. Okay. Um, I, I would like to, I would like to be part of the solution.
Thank you. Up to two minutes.
Thank you. Uh, as I said a moment ago, this cannot happen without a great deal of additional public process. It's, it's impossible for it to happen. Uh, I, I understand very well the question of why this site and why not other sites in town, and I think I've mentioned one reason for that, although the other, the other parking lots in town would, we would like to see senior housing, affordable senior housing on those sites, too. But why don't we do, the question's been asked, why don't we do a full evaluation of all those other sites first? The answer is, first of all, that, that, that the town just did a housing production plan in which hired consultants, did look at all the sites in town, and did try and come up with, with reasonable places where affordable housing, particularly street senior affordable housing can be built, and they cited this specific lot as an example. Um, it's also been suggested that we wait until the town receive a, um, get, get a, a study that's, that's currently in its early planning stages, hasn't been put out for bid, which is called the Strategic Asset Plan, which is tends to look at, intends to look at all of those of the town's real estate assets and look at, at, uh, potential uses fund. That process has already been two years and is likely, in my opinion, to be at least one year and possibly two more years. As Henry described, we've got a crisis on our hands right now, and, uh, to, to wait two more years while we, uh, identify all the lots which have already been identified and only to find that nobody really wants to, to see change in the lot right next to them, uh, to us seems like a, a, like a little waste of time, valuable time that we need to, to provide this kind of housing right, right away. Um, this will not be the end of the process. This project will sink or swim on its own merits, and those, but those merit, and, and the criteria for, for deciding that would be very elaborately, uh, determined by, uh, the Board of Selectment and probably by a committee that they delegate, which will have ample, uh, no doubt, based on my experience, we've found will have ample, uh, public participation, both in its membership and its opportunities.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Thank you, Mr. Goldstein.
Can I just, just one second? I think that we are moving too fast. It is very fast how we are moving, because you are going to affect the neighborhood.
Sir?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to move to closing, um, thoughts, and we're going to begin with the opponent. Liz Linder, please.
So, Brookline, I, I would like to just make a quick comment that this particular lot on this particular street has, um, abutters, residential abutters right next to the lot, and these buildings are unique. There's a character in Brookline Village that is quite unique, and I am concerned that the, the character of the neighborhood is going to, um, change significantly, besides the fact that it's going to hurt families that are there right now, residents that are there right now, businesses that are there right now. Permitted changes include air, light congestion, traffic, dust pollution, loss of property value, and tax base by long-term village-invested residents. The people on the bright side, which I am on and, um, my neighbors are on, their, uh, units are valued differently. Um, the construction issues feel like it, it has the potential right now with the other project across the tracks to completely disrupt the neighborhood and the commerce in the And I would just like to read as a closing, um, from Why Vote No Action on Article 34. The petitioners believe the location is the best, but there is no town-sponsored study confirming this. Petitioner, um, stated at the subcommittee hearing that they are attempting to shorten the process to achieve this goal, but processes are in place for a reason, and it is inappropriate to do an N-run. Um, the petitioners state this is just a resolution, implying it is meaningless, but we have all seen repeatedly firsthand that resolutions are later referred to as indications of the will of the people. We should anticipate if this passes, this resolution will be taken as such, as just such an indication, and accordingly treated very seriously as the potential breach of process, flawed argument, and demonstration of lack of respect for the neighborhood that it is. Um, I would support no action at this time and request that, that you don't need to take two years to do another study, but that we all sit and look at potentially three lots, and we open this question, um, next town meeting with, you know, let's take six months, and, and, thank you very much, and just reexamine this with proper process from the neighbors who live here. Thank you.
We're going to just take about 30 seconds of our two-minute closing, just to, to address two points Ms. Linder made. First, that we're doing an N-run, run-around of process. Nothing could be further than the truth, because there is no prescribed process for this. We could have brought a warrant article that, that, that had the, totally fleshed-out proposal and brought it to town meeting and, and said, well, this is what we want you to propose. Intentionally did not do that. We did a, a, a request that investigation and study take place. All of Ms. Linder's concerns are completely 100% valid. Uh, dust and traffic and, and air and, and, and the beauty of the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood, all valid. All of those concerns have yet to be tested, though. We're asking that the, the town undergo a process in which we test those, those concerns. Henry?
Brookline is an age-friendly community. We want to make it so accessible for people of all ages and abilities. I would love to grow old in this town, and I'm sure all of you would like to as well, but do we have a place to live that's affordable, that's in a centrally-located area? If you don't, then you want to look for opportunities in the future. Right now, the town of Brookline is doing nothing proactive... Right now, the town of Brookline is doing nothing proactively. This is the only idea out there. We need two to three thousand units of affordable senior housing if we want to keep the current residents in the community. We need to address this. We could wait, we can study it, we can talk about it, or we can take this first step, which is just studying it. It's going to come back to you again. There's no way around it. Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thanks very much.
Almost fifteen hundred people on the waiting list for senior affordable housing in Brookline right now too.
I would like to grow old in Brookline too. And if we could have the proponent and opponent for Article seven through eleven come forward, please. And I would remind the group that there is a changing in timeframe for this last discussion. Articles seven through eleven presenters will have up to fifteen minutes for opening arguments, pardon, excuse me, for opening statements and five minutes for closing arguments. And there will be as much as twenty minutes of question time for this set of arguments. And if we could have an opening statement of up to fifteen minutes from Ben Franco, that would be great.
Sure. So, I want to begin by thanking the League of Women Voters and the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance for putting together tonight's warrant article forum. And I want to begin by saying some thank yous. First, to my colleagues on the River Road Study Committee for their hard work and their dedication both during the committee's process and the weeks that have followed the filing of the committee's vision for the industrial island. I also want to thank Andy Martner for his hard work and his dedication. He's an example of what we in Brookline expect from our town staff. He's hardworking, diligent, dedicated and above all else fair. I have the difficult task tonight of distilling eight months' worth of work in a very complex warrant article at that into a ten-minute or fifteen-minute summary. So, I'll begin by making sure that everybody in the room knows what Article seven is talking about, the area of town that it covers. The River Road Study Committee, a group that I chaired, was convened in early 2016 to examine the redevelopment potential of the industrial island bordered by Brookline Avenue, River Road and Washington Street, the home of Brookline Island Hall, the Beth Mary Hospital and formerly of a Gulf Gas Station. The industrial island is made up of very small, shallow, odd-shaped parcels. The average parcel is about sixty-eight hundred square feet and all of them bordered by parkland and to some extent impacted by the hundred-foot flood zone. This makes development challenging but not impossible. The industrial island is also a very desirable location down the street from the LMA, just outside of Brookline Village at the confluence of major roadways, MBTA bus lines and Green Line branches. And it's also a neglected part of town where the existing conditions don't match our community's vision for what a welcoming gateway into Brookline should be and what is acceptable in terms of design and character. For these reasons, the industrial island is a part of town that has long been the topic of planning studies that have sought to make improvements and to make the corridor a more welcoming gateway into the community and a more reflective of the Brookline brand. Those studies have recommended balancing development of commercial and residential properties, or projects I should say, enhancing pedestrian amenities and easing pedestrian navigation, creating specific districts within the broader Route 9 corridor to facilitate the implementation of the community's vision. More recently, the town commissioned a visioning study of the Route 9 East corridor by an urban planning class at MIT. The recommendations were delivered to the town earlier this year and served as one of the catalysts for the formation of the River Road Study Committee. The committee took the vision and the range of recommendations of all those previous planning studies and set out to figure out how to implement them into a balanced and equitable way that would transform this overlooked part of town. To do this, the committee had extensive conversations about the types of uses it wanted to see incentivized and what types of buildings it found acceptable and how appropriate development could transform the public realm by leveraging investment and public benefits. The committee also discussed at length how to structure the special zoning district and supplementary guidelines to ensure future buildings are designed and constructed with the utmost care and quality, and the result of that process is Article seven. In a nutshell, Article seven would allow the types of uses that have little impact on town services, most specifically by minimizing impact on their schools. The River Road Study Committee determined, as did our independent financial consultant, that all the proposed uses contained within Article seven would be viable but only with zoning in place that incentivizes aggregation of the fragmented parcels to achieve the necessity, necessary, excuse me, economy of scale with respect to floor plate sizes requirements and the density required for all these uses to be viable. And this is why Article seven envisions three development sites at the industrial island. Beyond financial feasibility and floor plate requirements, the other reason there are effectively three development sites is the geometry required for structured parking. The committee made the decision very early on based on community and committee's desire to have a vibrant, active streetscape in this area, not to allow any onsite parking at the ground level. With parking not permitted at the ground level, the only place left to build parking based on the high water table in the area is the building's upper floors. To achieve the requirements of structured parking with the turning radii, the ramps, you need parcels of a certain size and that, along with the reasons I've just articulated, that explains why the committee ended up with three development sites. A word about sidewalk widths, as this was the primary difference between Article seven and Article eight, there was therefore been a lot of conversation about this topic over the past few weeks. Sidewalks were one of the primary areas of focus for the River Road Study Committee. We deliberated at length about the specifics of what would be acceptable width for the three sides of the industrial island. And improving pedestrian circulation and making the district more pedestrian-friendly was one of the primary planning goals the committee sought to achieve in developing a comprehensive plan for development of the industrial island. In fact, the committee during this process pushed back aggressively against proposals for narrower sidewalks, particularly on the Washington Street side of the industrial island, until we reached the minimums that you see in the warrant article today, which are wider than what exists today, what the existing conditions are, wider than what has been planned for as part of the Gateway East project and wider than what will be there if Article seven does not pass. Article seven sets the minimum sidewalk widths of Brookline Avenue and River Road at twelve feet and on the Washington Street side, the minimum sidewalk width would be ten feet. Based on the detailed analysis of the River Road Study Committee, we found that it's likely that a five-foot portion of the Washington Street sidewalk would need to be less than ten feet and weigh eight feet more specifically because of the constrained site conditions. There are likely pinch points at the northern end of the district as well where the sites become even more narrow. Rather than not providing any relief to allow for reduced sidewalks, the River Road Study Committee decided to allow for some exceptions in order to allow for development to proceed, but only in those limited impacted areas. Article seven would permit the planning board to allow for a reduction in sidewalk width on Washington Street and River Road to no less than eight feet, but only on the portion of those sidewalks where hardship can be demonstrated. We've talked a lot about the specifics of why, but for now I'll just say that the work of the River Road Study Committee showed that a wider sidewalk would eliminate the feasibility of the hotel's development. And here I'm talking about the Washington Street sidewalk, thereby negating all of the public benefits that have been negotiated as well as all of the hard work of the committee. I'll close by saying a little bit about Articles nine and ten. Article nine would authorize the selectmen to sign a tax certainty agreement with the developer of the proposed Twenty-Five Washington Street Hotel, locking in property tax payments with the developer for the next ninety-five years, even if the property were to be sold to a nonprofit who would use that hotel for an exempt use. In future fiscal years, following the completion of the hotel, should Article seven pass, it's estimated that the hotel would generate a million dollars in property tax. This is roughly ten times the tax revenue of the entire industrial island generated in the most recent fiscal year. Article ten would allow the selectmen to sign an agreement with the developer of the proposed hotel that would lock in additional public benefits and public realm improvements beyond those required in the zoning, again in the immediate areas surrounding the developer's building. We also negotiated a commitment that the hotel parking access for the northern-facing building wall will be designed and constructed in such a way as to allow for it to accommodate shared parking access to the future development immediately to the north of the Twenty-Five Washington Street parcel. Oting shared access increases the likelihood that development moving forward on the neighboring parcel will allow for an active ground-floor use and won't be consumed with entrance and exits for parking and that the pedestrian experience will be improved by eliminating additional curb cuts and opportunities for conflict between vehicles and pedestrians. In summary, the River Road Study Committee process was a balanced act involving a lot of analysis, negotiation and equally as much compromise. The results of Articles seven, nine and ten are a balanced approach to implementing many of the town's longstanding goals for this area of town and will finally begin a process of transforming this area into a welcoming, attractive gateway that many of us have long envisioned will providing a significant lasting benefit to the town. Thanks.
Excuse me, I was keying up. Do you want to sit down for a minute? And Mr. Madison, if you would like to proceed, you have up to fifteen minutes.
Thank you, my name is Hugh Madison, I'm a town meeting member from precinct five and I was on the River Road Study Committee. My proposal to deal with two articles, Articles eight and eleven. Article eight is a zoning change, it's exactly the same as Article seven, except it would require a sidewalk at least eighteen feet wide at Twenty-Five Washington Street where the hotel is going to be, and it would include an eight-foot-wide sidewalk and a ten-foot-wide planting strip. The idea of the planting strip is to separate the bicyclists on the cycle track from the pedestrians which will be in an eight-foot sidewalk against a very tall building. So, the Article eight is a change in zoning and Article eleven is a resolution which is non-binding. Next. The 2005 comprehensive plan talks repeatedly about the overall character of Route 9 corridor and the need for a visual gateway to town. Next. In the 2000, next. The 2005 plan noted that a very green area was suggested to replace the Gulf Station located on Washington Street, so the town bought into this whole concept and they were looking at this. So, that's sort of what we think of ten years ago. Next. The 2014 recommendation from McYoung Kim landscape architects working on the Children's Hospital concept plan was, maybe here, a view from Route 9 as one arrives in Brookline from Boston must include robust tree canopy and landscaping acting as visual gateway into Brookline. So, that's the vision. Next. All buildings on this part of the Route 9 corridor have setbacks, except for the proposed hotel. So, there's a setback here, setback at Brook House and nothing here unless you get a strip in there. Next. Sidewalk design is complex. To provide comfort and safety in a two-to-three-foot comfort zone is recommended to separate the walker from a building. Article eight merely requires a sidewalk with an adequate planting bed to provide a room separation of walkers and cyclists. Next. The average sidewalk width is listed as ten feet eight inches. However, the so-called pinch point is only eight feet. This pinch point must be able to handle the pedestrian flow. It is uncomfortable to walk two to three feet next to the wall of a building as we saw on the previous slide. There will be about eight hundred employees at Two Brookline Place plus patients and more employees at the One Brookline Place expansion, more housing in the rest of the industrial island and over six hundred units of housing now under construction in South Huntington Avenue in Boston. Brookline is trying to encourage alternative transportation. That means making walking easy, safe, desirable and attractive. Next. This shows the problem of River Road. Pedestrians and cyclists moving east and west and conflicting at the corner of River Road and Washington Street. Also, there's substantial traffic turning onto River Road. Once wanted to Brookline Place the proposed hotel residential units and the over six hundred units are completed, there will certainly be more pedestrians. Next. Here's another example of morning piga for traffic. You can see how they're prowling in there and there's traffic trying to cross here too. Next. Article eight only provides space for a design for a planting bed following a model of a safe and attractive pedestrian path, cycle track on Western Avenue and Cambridge. This design encourages walking and bicycling, two of the goals of the complete streets policy that the selectmen signed earlier this year. Next. This map shows the demographic characteristics of the area around the Arnold Island. All budding areas are either minority, low income or speaking a foreign language. These are the walkers, the primary users of Washington Street. Why are we adhering to their needs? Article eight follows the recommendations of the Gateway East planning project to cause for green, welcoming gateway to Brookline. Next. The left rendering provided by the hotel developer shows a two-narrow sidewalk on a columnar tree which touches the building. The right side rendering shows the ten-foot-wide planting strip and an eight-foot-wide sidewalk. Brookline has a brand of tree-lined walk-in streets and human scale buildings. We want to keep that. Next. Here's an example of how columnar trees look in wall damp for any effect. They need to be planted close together. In fact, Article seven requires street trees approximately every twenty-five feet on all budding streets. However, the zoning allows the developer to make a cash contribution instead of street planting trees. Next. Article eleven is a resolution asking the selectmen to use their best efforts to widen the sidewalk at Twenty-Five Washington Street enough to allow a planting strip that includes a row of full canopy trees to separate the proposed cycle track from pedestrians. It deals primarily with the public way, not with the hotel property itself. A cash contribution by the developer will not take place in full canopy trees such as oats or maybes nor will it provide the green entrance in Boston that Washington Street deserves. Article eleven emphasizes the need for planting full canopy trees. Under Article eleven, the board of selectmen have a number of options available to address this issue, including negotiating a change in hotel design and including this as an element in their charge to a design advisory team. If Article eleven is passed, it will be town meeting's expression that we want the selectmen to consider pursuing a design that provides safe green entrance on Washington Street. Next. This is a once-in-a-generation chance to realize the potential expressed in the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Time for questions at this point. We have up to twenty minutes for questions. I have one over here.
Yes, I have a question. If you do the ATV, how is that going to impact roadway and the buildings on the planned hotel?
Well, the hotel developer has said that he needs the design he has proposed to handle the turning radius for the cars on the second and third levels. So, I am assuming that we want to keep that proposal on the table. There are other options though and I don't think they've been explored completely. For example, the hotel, if you recall, the sidewalk width is from eight to ten feet eight inches. So, there is a little space there that could accommodate some bent over trees, I believe. I, the design for the cycle track has not been completed, so that there may be options there for getting another foot or two. And whatever can be done there... And whatever can be done there, it's important to do, because I call it hardscrabble. Probably the most hardscrabble corner in Brookline, and we want to look different from Boston.
Thank you. Please, you have up to two minutes to respond.
So thank you for the question. The width of the Washington Street sidewalk was one of the things that the committee spent a great deal of time taking a look at, and one of the areas that the committee actually pushed back on the developer, the proposed developer, on, who was initially proposing a six-to-eight-foot sidewalk on Washington Street. The architects and the financial feasibility folks on the committee spent several weeks studying the critical dimensions and all the issues necessary to allow the Emerald Island Special District to allow for a hotel that was feasible to be advanced, specifically in terms of square footage and the development costs. So your question is right on. There's only two places that you can take space from in order to widen that sidewalk. One is the Route 9 cross-section, and that's the subject of a separate project, which is currently 25% design, under review by the state. And to sort of cut to the chase here, that roadway has been narrowed as much as possible. There's no room to constrict it any further. If you go the other way into the 25 Washington Street parcel, what you do is you effectively push the parking ramp into the neighboring parcel, rendering the hotel infeasible. You just can't get the turning radiuses and the ramp angle necessary to have a viable development project there if you expand the Washington Street sidewalk any further. I also want to highlight that what we're talking about here is zoning. We're enabling a conversation to occur down the line at the planning board level. There will be a design advisory team. The planning board is going to take a very close look at this, and I expect that one of the areas that they spend a great deal of time on is verifying the work of the River Road Study Committee, that you just can't get that extra few feet of sidewalk on Washington Street.
Thank you very much.
One comment. I think the important thing to carry away is that rendering that was provided by the developer is not realistic. You just can't put a tree right up against a building. It won't work. It won't look well at all. And if nothing else, this discussion has brought that out, and will encourage some kind of stronger, you know, way to deal with the landscaping.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Let's leave room and see if there are additional questions.
Anybody else? No, thank you for answering. Is the correct developer also going to have other plot of plan? I should know the answer.
The developer has developed a speech, which is like one of the old kids.
Right, I know that.
And he has bought another plot, and I've heard a couple of conflicting... I'm not sure which... There's an easement area, but it's open now, and I'm not sure which law it's on.
Wait a minute, yes, I'm just trying to understand why the developer...
Well...
I'm trying to understand what the developer ultimately plans on, and if so, why he can't just move the hotel further back, given that we have had a long-term plan to have an attractive designated entry number lined up. We are just throwing out the window once again because the developer says they can't afford it, and already that design is pretty pathetic to support two-way parking and no sidewalk. But I, after the advisory committee meeting, drove through Boston and measured various sidewalks, even Brookline.
I'm sorry, but we're fairly limited.
Sorry.
Is there a question?
Yes, I asked that question.
Okay, good. Thank you so much. And Mr. Madison, you chose to answer first.
Okay.
You probably have about another minute if you choose to use it, and if not, I'd like to turn this to Franco.
The thought has occurred, obviously, if the site of the animal hospital were bought by Claremont for a second hotel, which has been proposed or has been suggested with a financial... Thanks for it. That would change the whole thing. That would make something more feasible. Today, Claremont hasn't said they're buying it, although I have my suspicions, but they haven't said it, and they don't own it now, so I don't know what we can do. You can't force something to something they don't own.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Mr. Franco, you have up to two minutes to respond.
So to answer the first part of your question, the developer does not another parcel on the industrial island. It is not abutting the 25 Washington Street parcel, so there's no opportunity to shift the hotel or move it down and expand the footprint of the hotel and shift the dimensions to site it now. In response to your question about why doesn't this plan comply with the comprehensive plan, the vision that we've done, in this community, we talk a lot about the future, and we do a lot of thinking about what we want the community to look like 10, 20, even 100 years from now, and we've not done a good job to this point of translating that vision into actual zoning. And the comprehensive plan, there is no doubt, had a different vision than what we see on the screen today, what Article 7 proposes. The problem with the comprehensive plan is that it doesn't involve financial feasibility or development potential. It doesn't do the nitty-gritty of what's possible. It's a true vision for what we're shooting for. Article 7 brings forward an implementable vision, an implementable plan for what can happen on the industrial island. We spent a great deal of time looking at the numbers, figuring out what the minimum floor plates were, what was going to cost to develop a site, and what you see is a trade-off between achieving that vision that we've talked about for so many years here, 20-plus years, and what's going to provide benefits to the community immediately and actually be implementable.
Additional questions? Do you have one to hear over here on the right? I'm sorry, could you speak up?
Yep, I have two questions.
And could you identify yourself?
Something in Article 7 prevent the building from shifting something towards River Road in order to get that turning radius on the second floor? I know it provides for a wide sidewalk on the road, but does it prevent the building from shifting something? That's my first question. My second question is, you know, we do traffic studies when we propose a building, and some that I've attended with regards to buildings in my neighborhood, this is my favorite, the traffic consultants say, well, there's upgrades in the traffic in this neighborhood, so no matter what we've got, we can't make it work because it's already failing. Well, that's really sad logic for trying to plan for the future and trying to prevent...
Pardon me, but have you concluded your question?
Yeah.
Ma'am, excuse me.
Looking at the...
Excuse me. We're trying to get as many questions answered as possible. If you franked your question, I'd like to give the gentleman a chance to respond.
Yeah, well, looking at pictures of pedestrians now, for all these building complexes here, has there been any transportation requirement or any transportation study for the needs of pedestrians on Washington Street?
Thank you very much. And Mr. Franco, we'll begin with you.
So let me take your questions in order. First question is, can we shift the building at all towards River Road? And the answer is no. One of the things that we discovered through the River Road Study Committee process was that River Road itself is Article 97 protected parkland. And what that means is you can't build on River Road itself, the ground floor of River Road, but you also can't deliver out, use air rights over River Road. It takes an act of the state legislature to be able to do that. Practically not possible. One of the things that the River Road Study Committee articulated very early in its process is we wanted to minimize the impact on the abutting Emerald Necklace Park. And for that reason, we shifted the building as far away from River Road as possible. So that's the answer to the first question. The answer to the second question about pedestrian access and vehicular access is the Washington Street sidewalk, which has been sort of the center of conversation for the past few weeks at least, is wider than what it is today, wider than what was planned to be during Gateway East, wider than what it would be if Articles 7 failed. We are doing something that improves pedestrian conditions. As to the vehicle question, 25 Washington Street is a former gas station, and I think we can all agree that a hotel generates far less traffic than a gas station with cars coming and going continually to fill up their gas tanks.
Thank you. Mr. Madison, you have up to two minutes.
Right. I'll just make a point that the design, the conceptual design that we've seen so far shows a cantilever, I think around four feet, although this is more than that, over the second floors up to the 11th floor, over the first floor. So if you were walking along here, you'd be under a four-foot cantilever. And the question is, why couldn't this be shifted over, even if you had a cantilever? This is more than four feet. Still shifted a few feet, and I think that the value in having a planting strip separating the cyclists and pedestrians has more value here than a couple of extra feet on this sidewalk.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Are there additional questions?
Seeing none.
Seeing none, I'm going to invite the two of you to make your closing statements. You have up to five minutes for your closing arguments, and we will begin with the opponent. So, Mr. Madison, you have up to five minutes for your closing arguments.
Well, I think the graphics are fairly clear. At the very least, Article 11 should be passed because we want to keep that vision in mind. We want to take every chance we can, and we want the selectmen to exercise their authority in shaping this critical entrance of Brookline. Arguably, the most heavily-traveled entrance into Brookline, and we should be conforming to the plans we've had in place for many years. And at the very least, if this was shifted, that would not... presumably, it would work within the developer's goals, and it would benefit the town. So I hope that Article 11, at the very least, should... So I'm supporting the town.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Mr. Franco, up to five minutes.
So I want to zoom out a little bit and talk about the whole picture here, and what the town stands to benefit if Article 7 passes. And there are so many things that it's sort of tough to know where to start, but I will start financially with what the town gets. The town stands to significantly increase the amount of tax revenue generated by the industrial island. The entire tax bill, as I alluded to earlier, for the industrial island in the most recent fiscal year was about $166,000. And should the hotel proposal proceed, it's estimated that the 25 Washington Street parcel alone will generate one and a half million dollars of tax revenue every year. It's a million dollars in property tax, half a million dollars in hotel excise tax. And depending on how development of the rest of the industrial island unfolds, it's estimated that the entire district could generate between $2.25 and $2.75 million of tax revenue annually. Clearly, that's a lot of money at a time when we've got some significant bills coming down the pipe. From a planning perspective, the River Road package, Article 7, gets the town closer to achieving a number of its long-term planning goals in the area, creating a greener, welcoming gateway to the town, transitioning the line away from a vehicle-centric focus, and providing additional benefits and amenities for pedestrians and bikes, decreasing the sense that Route 9 splits North and South Brookline, and finally incentivizing the creation of amenities that respond to neighborhood residents' day-to-day needs. Article 7 will also increase the width of the existing and the planned sidewalks at the industrial island, incentivizing the creation of new public spaces and reclaiming parkland for pedestrian and passive use, and require buildings to be constructed in an environmentally friendly way. Also, from a planning perspective, the town will be able to exert greater control over future development at the industrial island through the adoption of Article 7. Article 7 lays out a cohesive development vision for the industrial island. It indicates that to future and current property owners, how the town and its residents want to see development unfold, and what uses it finds appropriate in this location. Our proactively planning for development will vastly increase the likelihood that what is built will match our vision. The MOU and the tax certainty agreements clearly sweeten the pot. It provides additional benefits to the town. Article 10, as I've talked about, is a tax certainty agreement. It locks in that million dollars in property tax for 95 years into the future. The MOU between the town and the developer would allow for the construction of additional off-site bike and pedestrian and landscaping improvements. It would require the developer to design and construct buildings in a way that accommodates that shared parking ramp that I talked about, vastly improving and incentivizing the development of the parcel directly to the north of 25 Washington Street. It would require the developer to enter into a shared maintenance agreement with the town for the portion of the Emerald Necklace Park, meaning the abutting of the proposed hotel. It would grant an easement to the town necessary to construct the planned cycle track on Route 9 as part of the Gateway East improvements. This is a set of warrant articles, Articles 7, Articles 9, Article 10, that advance long-held planning goals of the town, provide financial benefits, and create a planned and beneficial industrial island for us far into the future.
Thank you both very much, and thanks, all of you.